To put it on vibrate or turn it off before we start. Right now, I don't have a quorum. Committee, I got anybody on online?
Uh, I see only Brandon Mitsuda.
Only Brandon?
I believe that's him.
Six. Yeah, yeah. Okay, alright, alright. Neighborhood, Neighborhood Board fourteen is now open. Um, first on the list is the fire department.
Good evening. My name is firefighter one, Jaren Perez. Um, so we have the statistics provided below represent confirmed numbers of incidents in the neighborhood board's geographical area for the previous month. We have the incident statistics for May two thousand twenty-five for fires, zero structure, zero wildland and brush fires, one nuisance fire, zero cooking, and five activated alarms. For emergencies, we have a hundred and twenty-six medical, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, one motor vehicle crash collision, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and one hazardous material incident. The Honolulu Fire Department is excited to announce the launch of two new public data tools on its official website at fire.honolulu.gov. The Incident Trend Dashboard and the Fire Response Search Tool. The Incident Trend Dashboard gives residents easy access to five years of emergency data by neighborhood, including fire, rescue, medical, and hazardous material incidents. With interactive maps and charts, the dashboard helps communities better understand emergency trends in their areas. And the Fire Response Search Tool replaces the previous response mapping tool, which is no longer supported and was recently taken offline. This tool enables individuals and entities to look up specific emergency incidents in which they have an interest in or may have been involved in or affected by. This tool also enhances transparency and provides residents with efficient and direct access to incidents in a secure and accessible format. To access more information of these data tools, please visit fire.honolulu.gov/news and info. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? The one I have is on that hazardous material contamination. Then we have a little bit more detail on that. On the hazardous material, then we have more detail on where it happened.
It could be anywhere in our district. It could be a gas leak. Could have been a gas leak, could have been a, um, yeah, any, anything that has to do with hazardous materials.
But they post that as an incident. So the question is, I mean, if it's a gas leak, you can tell me it's a gas leak.
Oh, we're not allowed to dispose of that information. I can get that information for you next, next part, neighborhood board meeting.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the police department.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Sergeant King, and I will be delivering some stats that occurred from April all the way to May. Uh, for aggravated assaults, we had two reported incidents in May as compared to zero in April. For auto theft, we had nine reported in May as compared to five in April. For burglaries, we had five in May compared to three in April. Robberies, we had zero. Uh, for sex assault slash rape type cases, we had two reported in May with zero in April. For simple assaults, we had five reported in May and one reported in April. Uh, for theft, which includes pickpocket, persnatching, shoplifting, theft of vehicle accessories, bicycles, buildings, et cetera, uh, we had sixteen reported thefts in May and ten reported in April. For unauthorized entry into motor vehicles where people break into your car, uh, we only had three reported in May and seven reported in April. Uh, total calls for service to HPD in this area, uh, we had one thousand two hundred and fifty-one calls for service in May as compared to one thousand two hundred and eighty-two in April. Um, basically also a safety tip, uh, we do understand that it is graduation time. So if you do partake in a party and, um, alcoholic beverages, please be responsible. Uh, have a designated driver, um, and be responsible and cognizant of other drivers around you. Uh, you may be responsible, but we can't guarantee that everyone around you is responsible. So always be vigilant, uh, as you're driving. And that's it from me.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Last month, you, um, the police gave the report. And on that report, what I was concerned is that it stated when the officer goes out on, um, request for discrepancy, he uses his own discretion.
Yes.
Now, the question I have is discretion. Can you give us some indication of that discretion? Because as far as I'm concerned, if I call the police for no parking, I expect the police to give that person a ticket. Now, the question is, this thing about discretion, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, is very troublesome. Because as far as I'm concerned, when I call or the residents call, they want action. If not, they wouldn't call. Can I get one answer on this?
Uh, discretion realistically is up to the officer. If you do call in a bona fide parking complaint or whatnot, and the officer goes there and they do assess that they are parked in a no parking zone, they are too close to a driveway or whatnot, the officer should be citing. If there isn't a citation and you're not happy with the result and the officer opted to use discretion, you can always have that party call nine-one-one again. Um, and if you're not happy with the result, you can speak with a supervisor or the officer can head out again to initiate a, the citation, I should say. Uh, if you're still not happy with the result, then a supervisor is available where we can meet. And then we can also look at the situation, whether, um, it's, it calls for it or it calls for a toll or whatnot. We do understand that we do live in Hawaii. Cost of living is hard, parking is hard. However, we do want to make sure that everybody is happy and that no one is being inconvenienced. Um, so we do our best to try and kind of, um, make a judgment call in terms of, is it bona fide or is it not?
So you're telling me that the officer has the so-called discretion to use in what action he will take?
Uh, realistically, that's more for like if we're gonna tow a vehicle or not. So realistically, like, uh, if they're blocking a driveway, if the party can still get out, if they're encroaching like a little bit, like a couple inches into the four feet area, the officer may not necessarily tow the vehicle. However, if it's blocking the driveway, preventing the person from getting out in a safe manner, then the officer should be towing the vehicle. That's, that's an example. Uh, also like if there are expired tax or safety on the vehicle, uh, the officer has the discretion to either tow the vehicle or just cite the vehicle. Uh, those are more like the discretionary things.
Yes, because as far as I'm concerned, you know, the so-called extent is towing the vehicle.
Yes.
Most of the residents would just like to see an, uh, a citation versus towing the vehicle, which I think right now to tow a vehicle is about a thousand dollars.
It's, it's, it's pretty excessive. It's a couple hundred, um, depending on also how long they leave the, the vehicle at the tow yard and whatnot.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Uh, bar was supply? Anybody? Okay, and the next item is item three, uh, residents concerned. Is there any residents concerned? Okay, um.
The officer isn't here. I think the point I wanted to make is when I've called about the parking, it has to do with safety of the pedestrians in my community, and it has to do with that stretch. And come on, um, Makonani Drive, where people get off at the bus stop, when there's cars parked there, people get, um, let off on the roadway and then they have to walk in the middle of the street. So that's what the issue is for me.
Do you know the crossing from Makonani Drive?
Kamali'i.
Kamali'i. My apologies for cutting you off. I'll, I'll make sure that, um, I get some officers to check that area.
But they cannot come Monday at noon time because nothing's gonna be there. They can't come Tuesday at five o'clock because nothing's gonna be there. So basically, it has to be the hours that the teahouse is in business. That's when you're gonna see some of these violations, including parking in front of the, um, fire hydrant on Kamali'i. Funny, cannot park on the Makonani in front of the Makonani one, which helped put out the fire at the teahouse, but you can park in front of the one on Kamali'i. And then parking in a stop sign. There's white on the road that says stop. There's a sign on a pole that says stop. People park there and I've been told, oh, that's a parking space.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make sure that, um, our officers follow up with that, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next is, uh, citizen concern. Is there any concern? Okay, I have a message from Chair West Fong. West had a meeting with Kamehameha School on the discrepancies that was brought up at our last meeting in May. Um, he talked to Kamehameha School and they agreed to have a meeting. And we will so-called, uh, inform the people about the meeting. Um, he wants the, um, councilman Tam, Representative Taniguchi to be at, also at the meeting. What I want is, I need to know the Aleva people contact, where we can contact the Aleva people to set up the so-called meeting, so they would have also the voice. Is anybody here who's, oh, okay. Can, uh, after the meeting, anyway, can I have your number, your phone number, name and phone number? So when we set up the meeting with Kamehameha School, I, I hope you, you folks have a good representation at that meeting to voice your opinion in that so-called May presentation that Kamehameha gave, which, uh, it turned out to be more of a concern of the citizens with, against Kamehameha. So hopefully, we can resolve the problem that you folks have. And Kamehameha School, according to West, is very, um, mindful about this problem, and they would like to resolve it as well as all of us. So, um, I just need a, a name and a phone number so we can pass it on, I can pass it on to Wes, so he can set up a meeting, and we'll notify you folks on the meeting time and wherever it's gonna be. Thank you.
Chair Nita, sorry, I think Rep. Takunuchi has her hand raised on WebEx. Hi, Rep. Takunuchi.
Hi, Chair. Um, sorry, I just want to clarify. Um, so I also talked to the school after. I've been working with some of the neighbors, um, Sue Evernhart and, um, a couple of the other people who were at the last meeting. Um, the school did tell me that, you know, they'd be willing to reconvene what we and what I and the neighbors had talked about last year to kind of get a status update on some of the things outside of the permit that they had brought up at the meeting last week. Um, I just wanted to double check. Did, did you say Chair Fong wanted to do a separate meeting? Or did someone from the board want to come to the meeting? I'm convening with the neighbors or what's, what would be the best thing, you think?
My understanding when talking to Wes, um, it, I think the way he's saying, this will be the first meeting of discussion that came out in May. I don't know about, what, what you're saying about a second meeting also, but as far as I'm concerned, this, this meeting is what was brought up in May, um, on the citizens' concern in the area of Haleva Heights.
Yes, okay, I'll clarify with, um, Chair Fong then. It kind of sounds like the same meeting, and I was, I, I am in touch already with, um, all the members in Haleva who were voicing concerns about the noise in the maintenance pit, um, already. Uh, we had met last year to talk with the school about some of those same issues, and we're going to be reconvening, um, as soon as we can find a day for the neighbors and the school, um, as well. But I'll, I'll just clarify if maybe we can combine efforts so we don't, we can maybe, you know, uh, coordinate a little bit more.
Yeah, well, if you can give us a date and time on your meeting, I can relay to the people over here on the concerned citizens of Haleva Heights, and maybe they would like to attend the meeting and find out about this so-called, um, second meeting. Is that possible?
Um, yeah, I, yeah, I think we might be scheduling, I think we're looking to schedule as soon as we can, um, but if anybody who's in the room, if you're, if you weren't at the previous meeting I convened, um, and you would like to join, um, please just contact my office, um. Uh, sorry, I notice you can't see the chat, um. Uh, it's rep.takunuchi@capital.hawaii.gov, or if you just Google my office, um, I'll let my office manager Kelton know that people might be calling if they're interested in joining the meeting as well.
Well, the district is your district. As far as, as far as the so-called meeting that you have, why did we have so much concern in the May, uh, presentation with Kamehameha? It seems like-
Because there were, there were, we were already talking about this with the school, and they were just extra concerned because if they were doing more projects with the permit, I think that raised a lot more concerns about what additional noise might happen with the conditional use permit that they were proposing at the May meeting. But, um, we are in contact with the school, and the school is going to be sitting down with, um, uh, Evernhart, uh, I got Robert and Linda and a couple other of the people, and we, we, we've been talking with them since, over the last, uh, year or so about some of these issues. If, again, if anybody else at the meeting, um, wasn't, um, already, uh, in contact with me and someone at the school, please just reach out to my office and I can include you.
Alright. Um, I'll, I'll relay this message to Wes, and, um, we'll see what he, he wants to do. Because as far as I'm concerned, um, the way you're saying that the concerns were brought up, but the concerns wasn't corrected. That's why the residents came forth at this army, or so-called presentation, that they had all this so-called discrepancy that they wanted to find out what Kamehameha was gonna do about it.
Chair Fong, thank you.
You're welcome. Item four, um, any of the, uh, members went and attended other meetings? No one? Going down the line? Item five, Ompa.
Yeah. That, uh- That would be me. So I attended the, uh, Citizen Advisory Committee on June fourth. And in there, they, in that meeting, it was a team's meeting that lasted about an hour. They talked about their transportation demand management campaign, which is to reduce drivers on the road. So they're asking folks to look for van pool, the bus, or to utilize the skyline. Uh, they're not trying to get people to stop driving, they just want people to be a little bit smarter about how they drive. They have, um, on their website, honolulu.gov, Complete Streets, they have the updated Complete Streets listing projects online. And there's also a proposed bus service changing, uh, changes that's gonna open on the second phase of Skyline. Comments are due on seven fifteen twenty-five. If you go to the Oahu MPO website, you'll be able to see their information there. Some of their twenty twenty-six initiatives have to do with, uh, city employee transportation demand management, which is education on transportation options, uh, also to utilize the City Holo badge program. So if you have a city ID, then you can use the Holo, uh, for free to, uh, anyone with a city badge. They want to build in some more education for public officials, work on some van pool subsidies, carpool matching, citywide multimodal efforts, on-street and off-street parking policy reforms, and then program monitoring of all of the TDM reports, that's Transportation Demand Management. And finally, the thing that would impact us the most in our district is they are gonna improve this project that they have from Oahu MPO for traffic signal modernization. It originally started with a budget plan of eighty-one point five million dollars, but they were able to reconcile some of the older projects where they saved money, and they have now increased that to two hundred and thirty-three, two, three, three million. So they're gonna see a significant increase in traffic signal modernization. All of this information can be found on the Oahu MPO website at Citizen Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have a presentation on early eviction. Do I have that person?
Uh, Roberta Hickey, are you here?
Let's move on. According to my assistant Carol, there's a handout over there on the so-called eviction. So if anybody is interested, uh, you're welcome to get one of the handout. Let's go to, uh, item seven, which is the, um, representative of government agencies. The first one is the mayor representative.
Hello, and good evening. Edward Ospano, Deputy Director, Department of Community Services, Mayor's Rep. for Neighborhood Board fourteen. Mayor's newsletter can be found at honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter, but a few highlights from that newsletter. Uh, Mayor participated with other US military leaders in the annual, seventy-fourth annual Memorial Day remembrance, remembrance at Punch Bowl. Um, a couple of weeks before that, participated in the, um, annual Honolulu Police Week, which, and honored over a number of tributes to fallen officers who perished in the line of duty. Also, we celebrate the arrival of seventeen new lifesaving ambulances, um, and so long overdue refresh to our fleet, uh, for our paramedics. Um, also honored nine bus drivers and dispatchers for an incredible fifty years of service, um, to our communities. And then finally, um, the annual city food drive did close, um, this joint city-state food drive did close. Um, results haven't been tallied yet, can't report on that. Um, but what the food bank did was something a little bit different this year, rather than having spikes during the traditional periods like Thanksgiving, they've been trying to do corporate giving during scheduled times to maintain a solid flow of food, um, this year. So that's, that was that event. Um, in terms of updates I have for you, unfortunately, I was not able to get a date for you on the two intersections, Bates and New Uanu, as well as Hollow Drive and Kapalama Avenue. I will be talking to, um, Director Morton myself, um, and hopefully get a, get you an update next month.
Okay, thank you. We'll wait for your report on this, too.
I will go find Director Morton or Director, Deputy Director Nouchi myself and get that update.
Yeah. Um, you know that, uh, New Uanu Bates? Um, did, they were, I, the, the point of transportation, we were talking about, you know, um, what they have to do? Did this thing about, um, press and walk? That means you press the light in the so-called-
Rapid flashing beacon.
Yeah. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, uh, I have, uh, I, I travel on School Street, and we have two on School Street. And as far as I'm concerned, it works pretty well. I mean, when they press the button, it turns, turns red, everybody stops, and people cross the street. And, you know, so if this New Uanu, you folks just keep on talking about congestion and, uh, you know, amount of cars. I mean, I, well, in my opinion, it's very simple. If you just put a press and walk and see what happens, and if it works, just leave it there. But anyway, like I said, that's my opinion. Thank you.
I will pass it along since I'm chasing them down myself.
Thank you. Uh, next is the, uh, council person? Oh, is there any questions for the mayor representative? Excuse me. There's none, thank you. Uh, next we have the, uh, council. Tyler?
Hi, this is, this is Jack Trusdale, his Director of Research, calling in. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi. Um, yeah, I submitted the, our new, our, um, monthly newsletter to the chair. I don't know if I got distributed amongst the members. Did you receive that?
Um, the chair is on, on, um, leave, and I have not received anything from-
Okay.
The council.
Okay, well, I'll make sure that, I'll make sure that, uh, the chair, uh, sends that along to other members, or I can send that to all of you individually. Um, but at least I can share our, our, our major updates are that, uh, the council member has wrapped up the budget processing council. Uh, so you might have seen some of that news about that in the news. Um, otherwise, Luliha specifically, there is a new, um, urgent care center open. It's called Kuakini Urgent Care, um, opened on June second. Um, that should be a good resource for the Luliha community. Um, otherwise, our, uh, Luliha specific updates, uh, that's about it. But I'm happy to take any questions and, um, report back to the council member, and you guys answer us the next time around if you have anything.
Yes, on our agenda, you have two items. One is the sidewalk for on Judge Street. And the other one? Go ahead.
Sorry, what was the other one?
The other one was the building on, uh, Napoilo Park. Uh, that's the park, uh, on top of Haleva Heights.
Okay, um, I don't know that I got this, um, as, as something I, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know, but I can bring back information for the next, um, meeting if that's all right.
So right now, you don't have any information on the two items that we, we have been on our agenda?
Uh, no, sorry, sorry, I can, I can pass that along to the council member, though. I don't, I don't recall this, uh, did this come up, meeting?
It, it's been on our agenda for at least three months.
Okay, alright, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll ask the council member and re, report back next time.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, next up is, uh, Senator Robes.
Hello, hello, everyone. A pretty short report tonight. Uh, there was another reported case of measles here in Hawaii in April, so, um- Hello, hello, everyone. Pretty short report tonight. There was another reported case of measles here in Hawaii in April, so measles is one of the most highly contagious viruses in the world. So recommend, would ask that you think about just checking to be sure you're up to date on your MMR vaccine. Next item is the Hawaii State Library has launched their two thousand and five summer reading program, or I'm sorry, reading challenge. It goes from June first to July thirty-first to encourage reading for individuals of all ages. There are different sets of goals for children versus teens and adults, and prizes will be awarded for those who win in their categories. Some of the prizes are quite good. I think it's an Alaska round trip airline ticket for four people. So it's, besides, besides the joy of reading and learning, you might get lucky there, too. You can go to their website for more information and how to register for the challenge. It's librarieshawaii.org, all one, or librarieshawaii is all one phrase, dot org slash summer reading. So that's librarieshawaii.org slash summer reading. And let's see. Oh, the other thing I was going to mention is right now, the legislature is not in session. The uncertainty in Washington about what the financial, what finances will be coming to Hawaii may necessitate a special session later in the year, but it's all very much up in the air. Some people are saying October because the federal fiscal year starts in October, but of course, for years, for decades, not having nothing to do with, well, maybe it's worse under Donald Trump, but it's been this way for years. They never finish their, their stuff up by the first of October like they're supposed to. So we don't really know, but there is that possibility that we're going to have to go back in and try to figure out, you know, what, what money we've lost and how to replace it, if at all. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Any questions from the audience? Thank you.
Okay, great. Have a good evening.
Next, we have Senator Kim.
Aloha, board members, chair. Good evening. My community report has been sent out digitally. I hope that you have gotten it. And if there are any members in the community attending that would like to get this, when you get it, they can send their emails to my office. Legislative update, the governor on Friday released the intent to veto list, which consists of nineteen bills, includes the budget, state budget bill as well. Important to note, however, that just because it's on this list does not guarantee a veto. He could still either not sign it and let it become law without his signature, or he can still sign it. If he, if he does, he has to veto by July ninth. That's the deadline. And then the legislature, if they want to override in a special session, we have to do this before noon on July ninth. So otherwise, any bill on the list that is not vetoed by then will automatically become law. And if you want to see the full list of the nineteen bills so far, you can visit governor.hawaii.gov. Included in the report, I listed several of the community organizations that serves our district, that the legislature funded with state grants. These organizations include Kukoa Kalii Valley, three hundred thousand dollars, Lana Kila Senior Center, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, Kalii Community Center, two hundred thousand dollars, Helping Hands Hawaii, fifty thousand dollars, Kalii Palama Health Center, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, and Lana Kila Pacific, Pacific, five hundred thousand dollars. Also, we have been getting a lot of calls regarding power lines, touching trees, and whether to get the Hiko or Hawaiian Tel to cut the trees. And one way for you to recognize whether it's a Hiko, Hawaiian electric lines, or whether it's telephone lines, you can tell power lines are thinner. They're located higher on poles, and they carry electricity. Whereas the telephone lines are cable, internet, they're thicker and usually bundled, and they sit lower on the pole. And the telecom poles are usually shorter and only carry non-electric lines. And so if you do see these power lines and you worry that it may catch on fire, then call on Oahu, Hiko, at eight five five three zero four one two one two. And then for telecom lines, you can call eight oh eight six four three three four five six. Or you can call my office and we can report it for you. Following up on Senator Rhodes on the library, library, our Hawaii State Library has launched a new card design. And so if you trade in your old card, you can then get a free new one with the new art logos on the card. And it is free for all Hawaii residents, military personnel, and dependents. I read eBooks, and you can get it for twenty-one days. You can borrow it for twenty-one days and read it on your phone or your iPad. And I do that a lot when I travel, especially on the airplane, which is a really good way to go, especially because, you know, your eyes looking at the blue light is not really good on your eyes. And so I recommend that if you don't have a card, or if you haven't been doing eBooks, that you might want to do so. It's really easy. You, you can download an app called Libby, and you can rent any of the books. So with that, I am open to any questions.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? I have one.
Sure, go ahead, Donald.
Senator Kim, you know, I read in a paper that the governor is going to veto so many bills from the legislature that was brought out. My question is, is there any reason why he wants to veto all these bills? Because as, as we know, to have a bill come out of the legislature is very difficult. I mean, it's very screwed eyes and, you know, and if he doesn't make it, it dies. Now, these bills come out, and as far as I'm concerned, I, I, I I looked at the list of bills in the newspaper, and some of these bills are credible. And I cannot see one person that can shove all this out and just say, I'm sorry, but I'm going to veto it. I mean, you know, to me, I, to me, it's not a legislature policy. Can you give us any idea on this?
I can. So what happened is when the bills are passed, and normally during the session, his departments should come in and tell us if there's faulty items in the, in the bill. And his attorney general usually will come in and tell us if there are legal issues with the bills, and we normally try to correct that. However, when these bills then pass, he asks his agencies, and many times the agencies will point out parts of the bill that may not comport to legal issues, or they might have issues with it. For instance, like the property forfeiture bill, I think the timing where we want them to have a and I, and I think Senator Rhodes can, can attest to this better than I can because he's a judiciary chair. But there's an issue of when you can get the forfeiture and how long before, see, we're saying that they should have a conviction. And the law enforcement is saying, no, you know, we, we don't want that at that point. And so there's a point of contention there. And so a number of the bills are like that. And he does explain it if you go onto the site. He does explain his reasons. And we don't always agree with his reasons. And if the reasons are legitimate, we'll go back next year and try to fix it. So that's what I can share.
Yeah, but do you agree that one person can kill a bill? That the legislature takes, what, two months or three months to bring out?
Yeah, and there's seventy-six of us that has to go ahead and, and agree to it. But again, you know, that's in the constitution. He has that veto power, but we can override. You know, we can override. We can go in and we can get together, and two-thirds of the House and Senate can override and put the bill into law. It doesn't happen often, but we can do that if there's enough people willing to go against the governor's veto.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have House Representative, District Seven. Twenty-seven.
Hi, everybody. Um, I just want to share a couple of, some things around preschool meals for students. Any student who's eighteen years and younger, there's one that's based in our DOE public schools. You don't have to be enrolled in a DOE school. You just have to be eighteen years and younger. This is to feed people during the summer months when school's not in session. So starting on June twelfth, meals will be available Monday through Friday at certain Department of Education schools as part of the Seamus Summer Option Program. And the three closest schools, I think, to our immediate area will be at Maima Elementary, Roosevelt High School, and Stevenson Middle School. There's going to be two meals offered every day, breakfast from seven fifteen to eight forty-five, and lunch from ten thirty AM to twelve PM. Except, oh, sorry. So starting June twelfth through the summer, except on the Fourth of July. There's actually a bunch of schools across the island. If you know anybody else, any families who you know who benefit from this program, I'll put the link to all the participating public school sites in the chat. But again, the three closest ones to us are going to be at Maima, where you guys are, Roosevelt High School, and Stevenson Middle School. There's also a second meal program for Kiki being run through the Hawaii Food Bank. This is the Sun Meals Program. And then this one, I want to highlight, it's just a different site, the closest site to us for this is going to actually be at Lulihua Library. So again, any, any children eighteen years of age and under are eligible to get a free meal through the summer if you need some help. And this program's going to run every Friday from June sixth to August first. Again, oh, sorry, August first, sorry, June sixth to August first. Again, skipping Fourth of July, which is a state holiday. And that's going to be every Friday, those Fridays from twelve thirty to two thirty PM. Lulihua Library, since they have the facilities, is also going to show a movie for everyone to enjoy with the lunch. They just have to eat on-site and enjoy a movie, get a good meal for any of the kids who need that. And I will also share that link in the chat. And also speaking of library, I know Senator Rhodes mentioned it, the state library system is running its summer reading program. Great way for kids, adults, everybody to just, you know, kind of take some time, focus on literacy, love of reading, hopefully sign up. I know they're trying to get a goal of twenty-five thousand participants, and hopefully everyone can help them kind of reach that. It's a free app or online at the website just to sign up. And yeah, if there's any questions or anything else I can work on, please let me know.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we have District Twenty-Eight, Representative Danielle Ho. Are you on board? Going down, we go to District Twenty-Nine, which is Ikaike Hase. Are you on board?
Yes, I'm here. It's good to see everybody. Hi, and I appreciate that Representative Sakunuchi is still at the office. Thanks for, thanks, Jenna, for working so hard. Well, you know, I think all of my colleagues from the legislature covered all of the really important news. I'm really glad to see that there's so many mentions of the library this evening. I'm a big, longtime fan of, of public libraries. So I'm glad to see so much love and support and interest in our library system. And also to see, I'm interested to see, you know, what happens with the governor's vetoes and whether or not there will be overrides of them in the next, you know, in the next few days. But I don't have anything else to report and can stand by if there's any questions from, from the board or for the audience.
Thank you. Any questions for Ikaike from the, from the board? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, Ikaike.
Thank you.
Next is the governor's representative. Are you on board? Next is First Congressional District, One Ed Case.
No, we do have Border Water Supply's Representative Iris online.
Oh, okay. Uh, next, we will go back to Border Water Supply. Iris, are you on board?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I'm late. So I just have a quick, the quick main break report of May twelfth. There was a main break near three two seven North Kuaikini Street. And the quick general announcement is each year, the Border Water Supply, we mail customers an annual report of the quality and contents of our drinking water. So effective July first of twenty twenty-five, we'll be providing this report on a biannual basis. So it'll be issued every July and December of each year. So the report is available at borderwatersupply.com. So for more information and to request a translated, tran, translated copy, please call the Border Water Supply Communications Office at eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one. So soon, your quality report will be sent out. And if you're a part of an apartment, it's usually sent to the building management. So you could ask your management, or like we mentioned, just to call us up and ask for a copy. So that was my report. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Iris, I have a question. Do you know the water quality? Do you folks go by district or overall?
It's by the, it's by the area that the source serves. So it's not just, it's, so if you're served by our Kalii Station or New Uwano area, we send it to those. Yeah, so we try to tailor it to what water you're served from, what sources that you're served from. But it's sent to the whole island. So I'm not sure if I answered your question. It's
So your, so your so-called water control is by district? And if you want anything?
Hmm, sorry, go on.
If we wanted to know the quality, we just go and call this number that you gave us?
It should be mailed to you. So it's going to be tailored to your home, your address, your area. So it'll be the sources that feed your parcel. And if you, you should get that in July. So it says it's online now, but I believe it should be July first, and it's still June. So you can go online and look it up by your address or call. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next. I need the approval of the minutes for me.
I'm, I move to approve the minutes for me.
One second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. It's passed. Next is new business. And under the new business, we have this Natsunoya TL's liquor license, which, as far as I'm, as far as I know, Natsunoya has not asked for or gave a presentation for this liquor license. There is a process that before they go to the so-called liquor board, they must do this procedure. And one of the procedures is to present their so-called requests to the neighborhood board. And as such, residents in our area can come out and speak for or against the license. As far as I'm concerned, I didn't see any requests from Natsunoya for a presentation of this liquor license. So as far as I'm concerned, it is still open. And the question is, I really don't know when the license is supposed to be so-called terminated or due. Because this was brought up by a resident, and her concern was about the liquor license. And that's all I know about it. So until I hear from Natsunoya, and we put it on the neighborhood agenda, then the neighbors can come and discuss it, pro or for against. And from that, the board will also vote to either support it or to deny it. So as far as I'm concerned, this new business is no longer there. So as far as I'm concerned, this, uh, new business is no longer there.
I'm sorry, Chair Nita, if I may. So there is gonna be a liquor commission meeting happening on June twenty-sixth. For me, I would encourage any residents, if they are concerned about the liquor license application for Natsunoya Tea House, to go down to the meeting and express their concerns to the liquor commission if anything. Thank you. Oh, is that, thank you, um, Member Cantrell. It is at, the meeting is at four P.M. Thank you.
Sorry, my notes say the hearing is six twenty-six at four P.M. at the Office of License Commission.
Thank you.
We already did the, um, commemorial concern. You wanna come on to discuss this thing? Um, as far as we're, we're concerned, uh, Wes had a meeting with your people, and it was not, uh, a date was not set. So why, anyway, uh, come aboard and, uh, let's see what you have.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair, or Vice Chair, sorry. Yeah, I'm, I'm Robert. Uh, I live, uh, next to the maintenance yard at Camp School for the last twenty-five years. Uh, initially, uh, when we moved in, it was just used for, they're just plants. You know, they're growing plants, they're shuffling back and forth to the school, which is fine. And recently, recently, uh, we started to notice that they're, uh, stockpiling rocks. And when I say rocks, I mean gigantic boulders. And then soon enough, uh, what happened was, there was, uh, they have a backhoe with a jackhammer. And I think the term for that is, the correct term is a hammer, a hydraulic hammer. And they start breaking the boulders into smaller pieces to put away. Okay, so I have a we, uh, my neighbor recorded this. Let me open my phone here. And then you can hear it. And it, and again, they're, they're breaking the rock uh, smaller to see them at the end. Okay? So the issue is, uh, you know, when they, you know, bring up this thing of, uh, doing a project. So our, our thing is, the last time I checked, I can understand they're doing this construction type of thing in an industrial zone or commercial zone property. The last time I checked, and this is, uh, I checked today, it's Zone R five, residential. One property, one house per five thousand square feet. And I don't think that that kind of activity is allowed in this type of zoning. So we're actually pretty, we're actually, we no longer are reasonable pe- people anymore, because we've been telling them or trying to get them to, uh, cut the noise down. So the thing is, uh, it's, it's nice, it's finally interesting that, uh, Camp School decided to sit down and meet with us again, to try to resolve the issue. So I have one, uh, quote that I'm gonna say for Camp School, and they're not here. We're kind of shocked that they're not here. And then, uh, I'm gonna quote, you guys hear this quote all the time on T.V. Okay, it's be a good neighbor. That's what we want from Camp School. So that, that's all I have to say. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Robert. So I used to work at Commemorial Schools, so I'm trying to figure out which maintenance storage are they using for these rocks? Where is it located?
Uh, it's on the Punah Gate.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sue Eberhart. I've spoke and called last week, and I'm also here. Because we want to reiterate the issues that our neighborhood, uh, along Aleva, near the Punah Gate and the back gate of Commemorial. They do that work that Robert has mentioned and significant other work. We constantly hear the backing beeping noise of any industrial-sized equipment. You know, that irritating, annoying beep, 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 all day long. There's no rhyme or reason, and they have been stockpiling soil. Just today, I witnessed that they grabbed a whole bunch of old desks and old equipment on a dump truck, and they brought it to the maintenance pit. And you can hear them unloading all this heavy equipment. It is very noisy. It is very jarring. It's not peaceful at all. We've been working with Councilman Dos Santos, Jenna Talk, Representative Takanouchi for, I don't know, going on three and a half years. We've met with them once. They said that they would let her know when they do these big projects. But it was once or twice, and that was it. But, uh, the other projects that supposedly last week, when that gentleman came here and said, no, we don't ever use that pit for any of this, and yet we, we witness it, we hear it on a daily basis. And this is not what it's intended for. And also, the other issue is that there is a fire break issue that Councilman Dos Santos is also aware of. There's a significant overgrowth between our neighborhood rock wall and the chain-link fence that parallels on Commemorial's property. The vegetation originally was, they used sprayed, chemically, they poisoned it, and so that stopped it from growing. For some, for one reason or another, they stopped doing that. And once they did that, the vegetation in the area has become extremely thick and inaccessible. So the vegetation grows, it causes the fence to split like in a V shape, and now you have a gap that's four feet. And initially, there is no way for us, the neighbors, to get down there, because as you can see, the V is so small on the bottom, that we can't go in and cut it. And at this point, the only way to properly access and clear the areas for Commemorial Schools is to remove the fence. And this is something that they were made aware back of September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three. Yet to date, there has been very little visible progress. And a month ago, I saw some fencing contractors walking on the line, and I happened to be home, and I, and I asked them the question, do you have any idea when they're going to do any work? And they said, no. And they said, if you have any questions, you can call the Director of Operations, Justin. We don't have a telephone number. It's very difficult to contact anyone there. At this point, we're seriously concerned that the overgrowth, especially the unchecked tree roots, that will threaten and the structural integrity of our rock wall. And it seems that, one way or the other, we're just asking for them to be a good neighbor. Thank you very much.
Any, uh, residents concerned? Um, as far as I'm concerned, this looked like an ongoing, um, phenomenon that we thought it was just when they came and gave their presentation, that the neighbors had little discrepancy. Now I'm hearing, it's not major anymore. It's a major discrepancy. And the thing I'm hearing is that our councilperson, and maybe even our representative, is, I hate to use the word, but they're not doing anything about it. And I hope this meeting that Wes, um, met with Commemorial School, I mean, I feel what you guys are, are doing. I have seen it in, in other parts. And I know it's very, very frustrating, because no one's there to help. And hopefully, this board will try to resolve this problem, because it's in our backyard. And as far as I'm concerned, uh, what I hear from Commemorial School is, well, you know, don't worry about it, we'll take care. But I hear from your resi- your, the residents, is that this is, is an ongoing problem. When I mean ongoing, it's not six months, it's, we're talking about years. I mean, uh, well, anyway, um, when I meet with Wes, I will go and explain to him on this meeting. And like I said, I hope I have your guys' number, so when we have this meeting, we'll go ahead. Okay. You, you wanna speak, sir?
I actually want to talk about the, I actually want to talk about the liquor thing for, for my, uh, uh, for my, uh, the Tea House. I understand it's not gonna be happening tonight. But it's still related, uh, also for Camp School and for the Tea House, okay? I'll address, uh, since we were, we were talking about Camp School. I wanna know why the buses.
Sorry, no, if you could move the mic up a little bit, and then if you, if we could have your name, please?
Steve.
Nice to meet you, Steve. Thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, the old gate, what we consider the old gate Commemorial, okay, the buses come up every morning, going to the old gate at six-thirty, and then they come down, and then again in the afternoon, that. These, these are all small roads. They turn up, they come down Alii Street, and they turn up Punah Street, right? I'm wondering why they have to keep coming on a small residential road when they have their big main gate the other way. So that's one. And if, if I invite any of you guys to drive, to drive down to Punah Street where it meets Alii Street, you'll see that there's a big dugout there that's been up for the buses and stuff. They got all this crushed rock there, and, and, and the residents on either side of the big boulders. To what am I call, uh, that's illegal. They, they, they don't own that land, but at the same time, I can understand they don't want all that there. Okay, that's one issue. Getting to the Tea House, they have painted a white line for their parking lot that touches the main road. Okay? And when they have a party, they put all the orange cones all the way up, up to the road. So they are claiming city and county property that is sidewalk, that's at least five yards, six yards. Okay? When they have a tea, uh, they have a big party, they're parking cars all the way up to the road. So no residents, people walk their dogs each night or just take a walk. You cannot walk around that whole curb. You'd be walking on the road. What I'm trying to get at too is also, they are charging for parking on that city property, eight dollars a car, and they've been doing it for years. Now that has to be illegal. I tried to call the mayor when he was on Rick Hamada, and I got cut off. Like they didn't want to address it. Uh, they say something like, they'll tell the police, you know, the police will, will notify them. They get away with it all the time. There, there's been no improvement, no tickets, no, no setback of anything. I happen to live on Alii Street where I put up with a lot of stuff. Twenty-one fifty-four has been, uh, uh, on, a, a house that's been with all the illegal. It's been on every channel nine, two, four. They, they've been fined over a million dollars for this house illegally, where, where all the, the, uh, tourists it, uh, staying there. And I've been putting up with it for four years, and now they've got something going, but I know there's still something going on there, because even though it's not the tourist people there, they got six cars of different people living, living there. And, and they have all these different apartments, like in the back, the top, the bottom. And, uh, that's another one that's gotta be illegal, because if, if they're not related, you can't have all those people living there. So for that small thing, the Punah thing is illegal, that other is illegal. They, another thing is when they did it about a year and a half ago, the city came and dug up the road, putting all brand-new pipes and hooking all the, all the, all the things. When I talked to the supervisor there, again, this other twenty-one fifty-four, he paved the whole cement thing himself out on the road there. The guy says, oh, that's all illegal, they're gonna have to dig all that up, like I've seen another one go down, uh, by, uh, by the Border Water Supply Building on Wiley, they have to dig theirs up. It's been there, and he, he could, could not possibly have gotten a permit. I have a neighbor that wanted to do something, and he went all kinds of ways and could not get a permit. And this guy could do it and wouldn't call in, and he didn't do it, he did it himself, and it's still there.
Um, this item on Punah Street, uh, did you bring it up to the, um, councilperson to look into it? Or?
I have a little.
Oh, did you? Did you brought this, um, item up with the council? Uh, Mr. Tam, Councilman Tam? Okay. Okay, um, Jenna is state.
Again, like I said, I called in.
Yes. I would suggest you talk to Councilman Tam, because he's city and county. Jenna is state, and you're talking about city and county property. And then the thing, what you were saying about, um, the concrete, I, I understand that, because I live on Kapalama Avenue, and I have this hollow drive, which is a private area that they can do anything on their easement. And, uh, oh, so the thing is that, um, if, if you have a complaint, um, bring it or, um, give me a listing in writing, and I'll carry this as one of our items, and on the new business, and see if we can try to resolve the problem.
What I want to say is, because if, if they're abusing that, uh, parking the cars and, and gaining money.
Yeah.
They're not being, in taxes, you know, they're, they're gaining money, and this is for years now we're talking.
Yeah, be, because, because I remember, what, what you were talking about.
In front of my yard in charge, but I, I'm sure the police would come and say you can't do that.
No, because what you're talking about, Natsunoya and the so-called easement, or you, you wanna call it a driveway, um, we brought it up many years back, and they corrected it. And now you're telling me they're doing it again?
That, that, that's what I was gonna say with the liquor thing. They want, they want to have all live music and drinking.
Yeah.
The stipulations will probably be put, put in, in that, like, after ten o'clock, you have the lower noise, music or something. They'll probably follow that for about six months, and then they'll start doing whatever they want again.
Well, the point is that.
Just one thing. And, and even when, when they had the, uh, maybe a permit, a permit themselves to, to fix up the building, they had a fire.
Yes.
And that, that fire, then they did more extensive one, and I'm sure that that, 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 that permit did not cover that, them being able to do that. Again, they exercised more than what they were legally should have been able to do.
Chance, you have something to say?
Yeah, sorry, if I make, if I may make a suggestion, um, Vice Chair Nita. Edward, um, from the Mayor's Rep, would the city possibly to be able to look into the, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's two concerns that, um, you'd brought up.
Yeah.
Would the city possibly be, possibly be able to do that, if you're okay with that, Vice Chair?
That's good. Uh, I forgot about our city and county representative, yeah.
So on that twenty-one fifty-four, I'll leave you that, that, that other illegal house, I, you know, they're fined over a million dollars and have not paid one, one cent of that.
Sir, sir, uh, uh, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam, they've started process to condemn the house.
The people are already making fixtures to it already, and they're condemning, who are these people making pictures if they're not owning that?
I, I'm just saying that it's in, it's in the court process now. They're starting that process right now.
Okay. Um, and, and as for her, she said she used to be with Camp, Camp School, Commemorial, sorry. Can you tell me why the buses have to keep coming in the residential area, instead of going to the main gate?
Um, I'm actually trying to communicate with one of the bus drivers that I know right now, so he didn't answer yet. I, I can try and find out more info for the community.
Because even when they have bigger events, like the, you know, they have the Polynesian and stuff like that, they'll have twenty buses come.
Correct, correct, and, and they.
Small roads, if anybody sees Alii and Punah, that, that turn is very tight. They even have to back up at times.
Yeah, and, and I understand that, um, I used to do security there, so everybody knows. So I can contact a couple of my friends who are still there, who are in transportation, to find out whether or not they'll give me the answer. I cannot guarantee that. It's Commemorial Schools. So I will find out, and at next month's meeting, I'll give you guys what I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then also for the young lady that was talking about the phone number, Justin is actually, so I worked in operations. Justin Marshall, the name that they gave you, he actually does all the maintenance, which is that Punah Gate area. I don't have his direct number, but I can give. I don't have his direct number, but I can give you the main number. The direct number that I do have is the Director of Operations, which is Jason Mijo. That's the person you actually want to contact. So if you want to take his number down, I can give it to you right now. And I can spell his name for you. It's Jason, first name, last name is Mijo, M-I-J-O. And don't tell him I gave you his number. They won't look at the recording. So Jason's number is, uh, eight oh eight, eight four two, eight seven nine six. That's his direct line. That's okay, I don't work there anymore, so they can't fire me.
I had a few other concerns, but I'm not.
And then the main number, the main number that you can contact for, to try and get ahold of Justin Marshall is eight oh eight, eight four two, eight two one one. That is the, uh, main number that you'll get the, um, um, I, I guess it's like their, their hub. And the person's name is Justin Marshall. He is the Director of Maintenance, which takes care of Puna Gate.
Donna, can I say something?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, if your community, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure Jenna them know better, I've not been involved in this, but if Kamamea Schools itself is not being responsive, they are governed by trustees. The trustees for Kamamea Schools, and I would recommend that you folks go to the trustees and ask them what's going on and why haven't they been responsive. So, um, that's another avenue and you can certainly look them up. So I would recommend that you also look at that avenue.
And Chair.
Thank you.
The, it's, um, Honolulu City Council Ordinance twenty-five dash one thirty-five is the action against the Aldilley Street House. And it was just passed on the May, May fourteenth. It, it means that their, their corporation council is supposed to take action against this house and it's a resolution to tell them to do that. You, you'd have to ask exactly what they're going to do, it doesn't say that, it just says take action against them.
Yes, come on, Robert.
Okay, yeah, sorry, it's me again. Yes, you are correct, I have the meeting minute of August two thousand nineteen. I did bring up the Natsunoya parking and yes, they did move back three feet and apparently they're coming forward. Yeah, so back in two thousand nineteen, yeah.
On, on that, um, issue, we, we can bring it up. I hope when Natsunoya comes up, but according to my colleague over here, the so-called, um, request for the liquor license is almost up. I know that before they had a problem and if they keep on, well, I, you know, we don't know what about the management. We don't know if this is a new management compared to the old management, but I, I am very delighted that the residents have concerns. And if you have concerns, we have concerns. And if you have a problem, we have a problem because this is our district. And we want to make sure that the neighbors are so-called supportive and we are, we are ready to support the neighbors. Okay, that's why we're here. And if you have a concern, please, there is a paper over there to request what's your concern and a phone number and give it to us and we'll do it and we'll put it on our agenda. And then we will have a discussion and if we need to bring in Kamamea or we need to bring Councilman Tam over here, we will request their presence. And the thing, the thing is that, um, we didn't know that we had such a problem with Kamamea. Okay, because no one told us anything about it. And I like when residents are concerned. And we're here to support you folks and that's our job. I mean, we come here every month and we sit over here as such. And there is no so-called comment, there is no, we thought everything in this neighborhood is fine and dandy, but now when we hear all these complaints, you know, we're concerned and we would like to have this fixed. So please fill out the form and give it to us and we'll put it on our minutes or in our agenda. Well, the point is that, um, well, the thing is that, you know.
Sir, you're out of order.
Hi, sir, um, you have to go up to the mic.
I have how many pictures taken of, of cars and license plates? I've called the police many times on that house too when they had, uh, they're parking halfway up on the road.
Right.
Okay, causing trouble because it's very close before you hit Puna Street and that Puna's had accidents because you cannot see up and down, things coming down. The police don't give any tickets because they say these people are just like tourists or something, not going to do nothing, right? So they will either knock on the door, tell the person you're going to have to move the car or you move this, well, the ee, 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 till the guy comes out and say, hey, you got to move that, okay? But it's been out there for how long? It's not only when I call that I get so tired of it all. And like I said, I have many, many pictures with the different cars and the license plates sticking way out on the road and it will be like that when the police come on their regular cruise during the day, during the night, they can see that. They're not doing it until I call. They can see the cars sticking out, why didn't they do anything?
Chair, I'm sorry, sir. Well, I do understand your concern. I do have to call a point of order because we are out of agenda because technically this should be brought up during community or resident concerns.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, this concern, as far as I'm concerned, is a major concern. And what the gentleman just talked about, that's what we ask the police, the discretion of the officer. And that's what I try to point out to them about this thing about discretion of the officer. No, the officer has the right and has the law that he has to provide the service and it's not his discretion. As far as I'm concerned, the officer has no discretion. It's either black or white, either it's a ticket or not a ticket and that's it. Okay, and, and you heard the police.
May I?
You know, excuse me.
Don, may I? Sorry, Chair Nita. May I? Um, if we could address that, I don't know, Edward, does the mayor have anything to do with this issue with the parking or do we have to go through another department?
The mayor, city, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
So relative to the parking issue, parking violations would be HPD. That you'd have to call nine one one and you can report that to nine one one and then the officer can come out there. As the police, um, as the sergeant mentioned earlier this evening, you can ask for a supervisor, you can ask for a second opinion and get some of those decisions overturned.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, Chair Nita.
Yes.
Um, I would recommend that we place this on the agenda for next month's meeting in regards to the two one five four Aldilley Street property as well as the, um, Natsunoya Street parking or Natsunoya Teahouse parking.
Yes, I have to apologize to my colleagues over here. As you, as you know, or as you can hear, I am very avid about problems of this community. And I don't care what other people say, okay? I'm here for one thing and one thing only, to support this neighborhood. And if I have, or if they want to chastise me, they can go ahead because I, I'm, I'm the type that I'll fight for the community. And whoever wants to have this ball with me, I am open because I'm here for one thing, to support you folks and that's the only thing I know. Okay?
Chair, may I?
Yes.
Uh, one more thing, I think your board, the, whenever board does a wonderful job and you folks really do support the community and it's good that you're going to put this on the next agenda. However, I think I heard that the, um, Liquor Commission meeting is happening this month, right? Before you guys meet again. And so if the residents have very serious concerns about Natsunoya, they need to go down to the hearing and make their objections. Otherwise, it doesn't matter what you guys do, it only matters what the Liquor Commission is going to grant. And if they're not going to hear all of these issues that Natsunoya is violating, then they're going to grant the permit and it's going to be worse. So I urge that the board sends a letter or a resolution to the Liquor Commission as well as the residents. Uh, otherwise, it's not going to, they're going to get the, they're going to get the permit. But that's my two cents, whatever it's worth.
Good evening, board. Um, my name is Mike Sakata, I'm from Kamamea Schools. I just wanted to clarify a little bit of what's going on. So one, um, the meeting that Vice Chair Nita and Rep. Taki Nuchi had spoken about is, is the same meeting. We had met, so KS had met with, um, with Chair Fong to kind of get him up to speed on what, uh, the campus has done to try to address, um, the issues that, um, you know, the, our, our neighbors have have brought to our attention, um, as Rep. Taki Nuchi had mentioned. There was a meeting, um, last year, an initial meeting to kind of go through these, these issues. Some adjustments were made and there was a process that was put in place to kind of get us any kind of, to basically allow the community to work through Rep. Taki Nuchi's office to let us know of any concerns. Um, so, uh, you know, with the, with the condition use permit item coming up last month and the, um, you know, the kind of the, the, the concerns being expressed at, at that time, you know, uh, Chair Fong had mentioned that he would put KS on the agenda for, for this month to talk a couple of concerns. We met with him to kind of bring him to speed and also to kind of ask him to allow us to meet with, with the community and also with the area legislators to try to work these offline of the neighborhood board. Um, so that's kind of where we're at right now. And I think, uh, Rep. Taki Nuchi's office has reached out to the residents and we're looking for a date to kind of get everybody together. And then I think at, after that meeting, we will, you know, we'll, we'll come back to the, come back to the board to, to update on, on what's happened.
You know, excuse me, but you know the citizens' concern, okay? When you gave the presentation in May about the so-called, um, improvement, the so-called audience didn't have any problem with that, okay?
Okay, so, sorry, if.
You know, as far as I'm concerned, the neighborhood was agreeable. This is something else, this is something that is within your realm that you folks are doing that is not, or was not identified. So, so all improvement, as far as I'm concerned.
Sorry. So the improvements are, are separate from, from these issues, right? Like these are future, uh, future projects that are happening on campus. So we're, what we wanted to do was take the other item, not, not the improvements, but the other items, the concerns, offline so that we can try to have a more productive meeting so that we can talk with the neighbors and talk with the area legislators and then, you know, figure out a, figure out a plan of action.
Yes, that's what we, that's not who we want.
Yeah, so.
Because now they're talking about you guys breaking up boulders. I mean, it was not mentioned previously to this meeting. So the, the question I have is that, you know, well, anyway, as far as Mr. Fong is concerned, we'll have the meeting, we'll invite the neighbors. The neighbors can so-called express their concern and then we will see what Kamamea does. Okay, as far as we're concerned, that's what we want, the board.
Yeah, and that was our, and that's our, that's our intention.
Okay, we want to make sure our neighbors are satisfied. And as far as I'm concerned, yes, you folks, whatever you guys do or improve in Kamamea, it's as far as I'm concerned, it's for the students and as far as I'm concerned, I'll accept that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, sorry, people, I was advised that I'm talking too much. Okay, uh, we entered a new business. The community, number ten is the community organization, Malahia Hospital, any representative? St. Francis, any representative? Uh, Lona Kila Community Center, Carol.
Yes, uh, and, uh, Lona Kila Multipurpose Senior Center is very thankful for everybody who participated with the e-waste and recycle drive that was this Saturday. Neighborhood Board fourteen was representative, AARP, the Lions, there were many people who came out to help with it and it was very successful. So thank you for everybody who brought in all of their e-wastes and their high fives and all of the rest of the stuff that was donated. Some of the things that, one, one of the, Lona Kila has been so successful in reaching out, bringing our seniors to stay active and stay engaged, especially through the, um, COVID lockdown. They're now being used as an example to other neighborhoods and, and the idea is to, to start making more, uh, senior centers that do similar things. The current geographical area that they serve is from Ward Avenue to Fort Shafter. But more people than that have been coming. They currently have two thousand members that are active any, on, um, any particular month. So they're working on senior programming to be placed in the state health plan and working with Senator Fukunaga about, about that. So, um, hopefully they can replicate what the things that are working at Lona Kila in other neighborhoods in the state. And some of the things they did, I just want to say thank you to them. The Lona Kila Senior Center members made ten thousand lays for Memorial Day. Ten thousand lays, that's just amazing. So there's lots going on, there's, um, they're taking a break, they're coming to the summer break and they'll start again in two or three weeks. And so those of you who, um, are sixty or over between Ward and Fort Shafter that would like to join in, the list of classes is extensive. I think they now have eighty-three classes that they do every, um, every month. And then they also have things like, um, excursions to different places and things like that. So please get involved if you are one of those who could be part of the membership and, um, have any questions?
From the board? Any questions from the board? Any questions from the residents? All right. The next is, um, Lilhia Library. The next is, um, Lilia Library, I was tasked to represent the board. I went last week, Tuesday. I gave them my card. And for this month, they don't have anything, but I told them, if you have anything, I, since I gave you my card, and my card has my email address, that you can send me any requests, and I will bring it up to the board. Attention. Uh, any other nonprofit organization? Okay, uh, uh, item eleven is the announcement. The next board meeting will be Monday, July fourteenth. And it will be on Ocello on Saturday, nine o'clock. Oh, and every second and fourth Thursday at two o'clock. Um, I have an announcement, and this is the announcement just for the board. Um, the Neighborhood Board and the Neighborhood Commission is having, uh, introduction to Neighborhood Board members and the ceremony for the Neighborhood Board. This will be held at the Filipino Community Center in Waipahu. And it starts at nine o'clock. Um, if any of you, if any of the members who want to go, um, there is a RSVP on the thirteenth. I just talked to Camelia. And if you wanna, uh, do the RSVP, she will take your name, and she would, uh, provide it to the people who take care of the RSVP. Um,
Donna-
I think most of you folks-
What date?
Oh, the date is June twenty-first. And, uh, I think, uh, I believe Camelia, all the board members had the email, right?
Yes, so the Neighborhood Commission Office were reaching out to all the new board members, either via email or physical mail, so we'll get into contact with everyone.
The advantage of going to this ceremony is that they're gonna give you the oath of office, that's one, that you have to take. And also on the Sunshine Law, that you have to so-called take it every two years. And at this ceremony, they will give us a brief on the Sunshine Law that would give you the points that you attended the Sunshine Law brief. So I encourage, oh, anyway, I will attend. I will attend as a representative of the Neighborhood Board fourteen. I don't know if, if Wes will attend, but I will attend and represent the Neighborhood Board fourteen. And I, I hope other members will join me in this, uh, ceremony. They said you, you have a free bento, you have a drink. Uh, so anyway, if you folks, and RSVP is June thirteenth. If you folks planning to go, Camelia will, will take your RSVP, and, uh, she will provide that information to whoever is taking care of the RSVP at the Neighborhood Commission. As far as-
Donald. Camelia, this is the last, um, meeting for this board, correct? So can we say thank you to some of our members who aren't coming back?
You wanna, you, you wanna take over on this?
No, but I know, I know that Dale is one. And these two are not coming back.
Henry, you, you didn't put your name in, right? Yeah, that, that was, that was, Wes and I was talking about. So you, you can't come back unofficially, but anyway, yes. Um, I would like to thank, um, Dale White for his service to the Neighborhood Board. Um, I know Dale White for a long, long time. He's been serving on this board for a very long time. And we appreciate his input. We appreciate his participation as a board member. And I would like to give him a hand for his outstanding service. Thank you. Um, if there is no objection, um, sorry, Henry, sorry, Henry. I mean, I, I, I just was looking at Dale White, sorry about that. Also, Henry was, is also an outstanding member of this board. I will miss him. Uh, he brought up a lot of, um, maverick, um, so-called comments. And, uh, he, but he, he's very, very, um, honest about it. And as far as I'm concerned, I will miss Henry, because I think he was my so-called partner in crime. Thank you. As such, uh, I would like to close this, uh, meeting. And I would want the phone numbers of the people who will participate in the so-called meeting with Cam School. Thank you very much, and have a good evening. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried. Bar closed.